On such an occasion, we're actually going to promote Lieutenant Ginevra to Chief this evening. So you've had about six months as Lieutenant. You could have run away, but you didn't. So we're very grateful that you stuck around. We've been impressed. The entire council voted unanimously to promote you, and we're excited to have this done tonight. I'll just mention up front real quick that we got a bunch of cupcakes out there, and they were provided by Mommy Magic Cakes. So thank you, Kate, for providing those. We're so happy they have the family here and the friends here. Hi, Margaret. Good to see you. So if you come up, we'll go and get this done. And I'd like for your family to come up as well, because we're going to put them to work right after we administer the oath, and we're going to let them put your insignia on. All right. Hey, come on up and get over here. You want a cheat sheet? Or did you study?
Maybe. I put a cheat sheet.
You can have it.
With the readers on.
All right. You guys ready?
Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I am Michael J. Ginever, Jr.
Do swear or affirm?
Do swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
Use the cheat sheet.
Go for it.
And I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Chief of Police.
Execute the office of Chief of Police.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the laws of the town of Mount Airy.
And the laws of the town of Mount Airy.
Congratulations.
Sir, thank you.
All right. And with that being done, we have to fix your uniform, because you're a little bit out of uniform right now. So which family member is taking care of the bag?
Uh, my wife, Jeanine.
Okay. Get you set up here. You can help her out. Go ahead and help her out. No pain, no gain. Do we have medical assistance in the audience? All right. Now we're in there. And then the second part of this is the caller devices, and we'll let the kids put those on. What's important is they're both lined up the same way. Got to keep the eagles flying, remember? So you got to take... There you go. Yep. I think there's two of them back there. Okay, there you go. We only got one owl. All right, we're looking good. Should have had you facing the camera so they could know.
Showed you a picture. Nervous? That's okay. I get nervous. I was nervous, kid.
All right. Go ahead and turn around. We'll get some pictures of you and your family.
There we go. Monkey in the middle. Here we go.
All right, let me move this here. Got those? Okay, council, if you want to come up. We're all going to surround you.
Alana, Danielle, come on. You're part of my family, too.
Yeah, who else up there? And then we're going to get the rest of the M A P D, even those who abandoned us.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Did we get the members of the police department? Come on up.
What are you doing? Even though you switched sides here.
We need you in yours. We all look better.
Yeah.
All right.
Do you want to say any words?
Ooh, on the spot again. Hello, Tess? So, no, I'd like to thank everyone again for the support, especially my family. Janine, Danielle, Chris, Alana, Mateo. I mean, it's been, you know, different the last few months in itself. Makes it very hard trying to do multiple things, going from one level to another. So at first, I thought, wow, this is going to be easy, simple. No. Nope, not by a long shot. I've asked probably numerous people, when do the emails stop? They don't. They keep coming after I delete 20 of them. More keep coming, so... But with everyone's help and all the resources from here, from Town Hall, all the council members, all of town staff, all the guys from the police department, even the ones that left. Don't mention any names there, Saroy. But, and not only that, all the community in itself, everybody has helped support me through this journey, and the journey's going to continue. So I think it's great. I definitely, I love it in itself. It was a little weird at the start. I've shared this story many a times with the community. When I first came here, it rolled up my window, and I was like, oh, God, why do these people want to talk to me? Like, don't bother me, I don't know. But, I mean, it's come a long way from there. And it's funny, because I grew up in a town like this in itself. So, yeah, it's been a journey. It's one roller coaster ride after the next. And one of my old partners in itself, Mr. Esworthy, it's in the back. He was one of my field training officers. So thank you. This has a good reflection on who you were at the time that I needed you for that support. That's awesome. I had some great officers that I worked with in the city. So, yeah, starting to get a little emotional here, but that's all right. So, but no, again, it's great. Back on the roller coaster again. So thank you, everybody, for your support all the way around and knowing that that was unanimously through Town Council and the support from Town Administrator, Ms. Heather, from Ms. Holly, to the mayor, to, again, everybody. It's been great. So thank you again. I really appreciate it. Thanks.
Oh, you got a standing ovation there. So, all right. So the council meeting starts at 7:30. That gives you 20 minutes to walk up here and shake this man's hand, say hi to the family, congratulate Janine on the fact that her husband is probably going to spend more time working. So the cupcakes are in the back. Please grab one, because we don't want to bring them home ourselves, because we're still packing it on, okay? So enjoy for the next 20 minutes and congratulations.
Thank you very much for all of your support. Thank you.
At this time, I will call the December council meeting to order. Everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we will go into the presentations portion of our agenda, and I will relinquish the floor to Ashley Collier.
Mary, do you mind joining me?
Ashley, I would pull the mic closer to you.
So today, we gather to express our deepest appreciation and honor to an individual whose dedication and vision have brought immense joy to our community. It is with great pleasure that I present this proclamation to Mary Hushour in recognition of her outstanding contributions to the town of Mount Airy. Mary's unwavering commitment and tireless efforts played an instrumental role in the success of Mount Scary, our spooktacular week-long Halloween celebration. Sorry, I had a cold last week. Held from October 21st to October 28th. This captivating week featured a list of activities, including the haunted caboose, Storytime, Pets on Parade, ghoulish gnome game, house decorating contest, trunk or treat, historic costume contest, a photo reenactment, and all of that added a touch of magic to our town. Without Mary's creative vision and her dedication, this extraordinary week of Halloween festivities would have never come to fruition. Her passion for community engagement, her ability to bring people together, have truly enriched the lives of Mount Airy residents. On behalf of the town of Mount Airy, we express our deepest gratitude to Mary Hushour for exceptional leadership in making Mount Scary a cherished tradition for our community. Let's applaud her for her enchantment as she brought it to our town and countless smiles that she inspired. Thank you, Mary, for your extraordinary contribution. And that is the official proclamation for Mount Scary. So you have it always. Here, I'll hold that with you. Have the flowers.
Thank you so much. Once a month.
Ashley, you want to come back?
Turn him around. Yeah. There you go. The prettier side.
I will tell you, Larry told me about this 20 minutes ago. And I was like, you guys didn't have to do that. I enjoyed helping. But I couldn't have done any of that without Ashley and Nancy and Gina and the town staff, everybody who helped bring this forward. My daughter Elizabeth, she gets involved in all of this with me. Yeah, we do all kinds of stuff. And Ian and Brian and Larry, he even dressed up in a costume and scared a couple of people. And Peter helped. He was our emcee at our costume contest, which we thought there'd be a few people. Oh, no, there was hundreds of people. It was amazing. And then the picture, when we reenacted and took it, that was my favorite, especially when we turned it black and white. If you haven't seen it, go online and take a look at it. The ladies at the Historical Society, every time I reach out to them for the bake sale, they come through. And I couldn't have done that without it. But just for everyone that came out and for being good sports, and, you know, we had a little hiccups here and there, but, you know, just the citizens and volunteers, that's what gives Mount Airy its magic. But to wrap up, I just wanted to remind you guys that there's a few upcoming events. Storytime's in the caboose December 10th at 11:00 and 11:30. Santa's in the caboose at December 15th. Both of those are free events. And then don't forget, the Historical Society's Box and Bag Bingo is coming up February 9th. So I'll see you all there. Take care and thank you again.
We have one more presentation on the agenda, and that will go with Mayor Hushower.
I think it's Ashley, the Historical Society, who has a presentation for us. So I'll let you talk later.
Great. Well, the Historical Society of Mount Airy really wants to say thank you to the town of Mount Airy and to the mayor and the council members for all their efforts on our continuing endeavor to save and preserve the flatiron building here in town. So as part of that effort, we're going to continue to fundraise and do what we can on behalf of the Historical Society and also work with the task force, the mayor's Flatiron Task Force, to continue fundraising efforts for the coming year. And this is a check we'd like to present by the end of the year and say thank you. And we're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I got a real one, too. Look at the picture. Everybody?
Yes.
Yep, 10,000.
All right, we'll move on to the public comment section of the agenda. Do we have anyone in the audience here that would like to speak during public comment? Seeing none, this will be a fast meeting. We will now move on to the approval of council meeting minutes and closed minutes and other minutes related there, too. So for the November 2023 Town Council Meeting Minutes, I will make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I do have a correction to the November 6 meeting minutes. Under 10, New Business, item number 10. It's the item that's just above, the Commission Appointments and Reappointments. Recommendation of Award for Engineering PFAS Remediation. It says President Washaba moved to approve. Councilmember Galetti seconded. Actually, that was Councilmember Demoter who seconded. So I request the update.
All right, so we will move to approve with the amendment of removing Councilmember Galetti as the seconded vote and move that to Demoter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is the November 2023 Public Hearing Minutes Regarding Ordinance 2023-32. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
I will second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the next up is Public Hearing Minutes on Ordinance 2023-39. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next up, the November 1st, 2023 Closed Meeting Minutes for subject Land Acquisition. I will make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And our final Closed Meeting Minutes under Personal Matter Related to the M A P D, do we have a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, good to go. All right, I will welcome Major Rolf to the podium for the Civil Air Patrol Report.
Good evening. Feel like I'm at the Mount Airy poetry slam. Keeping the theme, we'll keep it short tonight. This is our notes and events from November 2023. Under Mission Significant Activities, our squadron Cyber Patriot Team completed the second competition round. They actually, out of the two teams, one of our teams qualified for the Platinum Division, which is the highest level. So they will actually continue on through the national level competition. So we're actually very proud of them for that. Community support, the squadron provided a color guard and Pledge of Allegiance support to the VFW's Veterans Day Ceremony. And also not, didn't make it into the notes. I want to thank Mamza for a recent donation that we received in response to our Oktoberfest support. It wasn't a cool check like that one, but it was much appreciated. Qualifications and achievements, three of our squadron personnel completed qualifications as small unmanned aerial system technicians. This allows for us to have a much more enhanced capability within the squadron to provide any kind of drone or small aerial vehicle support, which can include photography or other types of observation that may be required. We also had one cadet complete all the milestone requirements for promotion to the Cadet Officer ranks. We hosted the technician training that actually trained eight personnel from two different squadrons, including six of our own. Nothing to report on flight time. Membership growth, we had two new cadets and one senior member join in November, so we continue that upward trend. Operational status, we remain fully mission capable as a ground team, and hopefully very soon we'll start reporting on our UAS capabilities as part of our operational status. On the horizon, we have some additional mission pilot training for a small UAS that actually took place this past weekend. And our Adopt a Road Cleanup Day was yesterday. We took care of, we have South Main Street as our Adopt a Road, so we were able to take care of that, coincidentally scheduled after the parade, so it worked out pretty well. We will be providing a color guard for the Reach Across America Opening Ceremony at the Pine Grove Cemetery and also helping support laying wreaths. I know, Mary, you have a comment later on, so I'll put my own selfless plug in there for any donations. If you want to go on the Reach Across America website, you can actually sponsor a wreath to be placed, which actually also supports ourselves. And I believe the Marine Corps League has a similar page set up. And finally, our Cyber Patriot Team will be competing in the state round next month, and hopefully will continue to excel in that regard. Any questions? That's my brief for this month.
Yep, I'll just talk about Reeds Across America at this point. It's a great opportunity. I think they're $20?
I misspoke earlier. I believe they're 17.
17, okay.
Sir.
All right, so it's a great... I hate to call it a fundraiser, because it's more about honoring the warriors out there for our nation. But definitely get involved in that. And we have a website link that we'll make sure we get on the town's Facebook page, so they can link to that, okay?
Excellent, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One is Reeds Across America.
Ceremony is on December 16th. So all across the country, there'll be an opening ceremony at noon. And there's a big one down in Arlington National Cemetery earlier in the day.
Cool, thank you.
Sir.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Major Rolf.
All right, thank you.
Right, next up, we will have the Mount Airy Police Department report with our newly sworn in chief, Chief Ginevra.
Got to move that down, short guy. Good evening, mayor and city council. So again, Chief Ginevra, Mount Airy Police Department, and thank you again for the support. So with our report in itself, meetings and trainings attended. Officer Wong completed his NCIC certification, and Officer Eberts continues his training with his partner Paisley. So that is still ongoing in itself. I'm hoping to, within the next two weeks, to have Officer Eberts and Paisley certified in just narcotics in itself. And Officer Eberts will continue with his updated certification along with then implementing tracking. With our community outreach, it was nice. The Mount Airy Police Department worked along with the Mount Airy Net. We adopted three families for Thanksgiving. So that was pretty nice. Some members here in the community that we supported with Thanksgiving dinners, and that was funded through the Carroll Community Foundation. And Outlaw BBQ sponsored that along with us in itself. So it was a nice experience. Corporal Brooks, K-9, Officer Eberts, my wife, and Officer Maderos participated in that, along with the other officers that helped prepare some of the items for delivery. So I'd like to say that was pretty nice. We're going to continue that along with the Net, too. Originally, they had asked if we were just going to do one adoption in itself, just for Thanksgiving, and I said, no, we're going to continue through on Christmas also. So I definitely have been in contact with those families ever since before Thanksgiving and thereafter, which is great. So that's a good support for that. We still have, obviously, our drop-off box, just to remind everyone for the prescriptions that are here at the station. No EpiPens, no syringes, no needles in itself. Last time through, when I went to empty the box in itself with Mr. Scott Skarff, is we're finding out that there's been some needles in there, and I don't want to see anyone from our department get injured or any of the techs that come when we drop off that. So again, it's just a reminder, please, no sharps. If you have a question, feel free to ask one of the officers there. They can call us in, or Ms. Marcy, she's a wonderful help, too, to make sure that that takes care. Posted some shopping scams. It's the holiday season, a lot of people doing shopping online. We have those so-called porch pirates. Somebody sees something, or one of your neighbors are out of town or anything like that, there's a box. See somebody swipe something from somebody's porch, just give us a call. Don't go out and confront the individuals. It could be another neighbor doing something. Just get a good description of a tag or what they're wearing, what direction that they went to, and one of the officers will investigate that. If anyone has any questions in reference to that, feel free to contact the Mount Airy Police Department. We can answer all those questions. Incorporated on our report in itself, trying to keep this on here, is our body cam footage requested by the state's attorney's office. And that would be a request, and this is mostly through the Carroll County, is Ms. Marcy prepared 15 files for videos to be uploaded and sent to the Carroll County's office. So I'm going to continuously monitor that, and that will be also in addition to the report, too, because that does involve some time. When the uploading does take place, it takes away from other responsibilities in itself. So it's very hopeful that we have Ms. Marcy doing that. But again, it does take some time for it to be uploaded for the state's attorney's office. For calls for service, we had 617 calls. We had a 21.21% increase of calls from last November of 509. And again, those calls for service could be also as a result of, it's just not calls that someone is requiring the assistance. These are calls generated from the officers, is self-initiated also that's on there. We had 16 Group A offenses and seven Group B offenses in itself. And just to let everyone else know, excuse me, just one minute here in itself, is for December 14th, we have packed the cruiser. This time here, I've incorporated another institution. So normally, we've started out with just Foodline, and we went to Walmart. So this time here in itself, we went to, we have it that we're going to use Foodline, Walmart... and we went to Walmart, so this time here in itself, um, we went to, we have it that we're gonna use Foodline, Walmart, Safeway, and the Weiss Plaza. So there'll be officers out there, and that again is December fourteenth from four to eight o'clock, so I know Ma- Mount Airy usually, everyone brings it. So it's the holiday season, so we're hoping to get that done. The Toys for Tots, we got a box at the station, I'd like to see, you know, hey, bring a new package, I, you know, toy and stuff like that, drop it off, help out the Marines with the Toys for Tots. It's a good cause, there's a lot of kids that go without in itself and some hardships with some parents. December sixteenth, we have shop with a hometown hero, that the Maryland State Police and Mount Airy, uh, we join in and do that. So it's, uh, another good cause to help out some, some kids and some families. And again, as Captain Wolf spoke about, again, the Pine Grove, we have the Reeds Across America, and there'll be officers detailed to participate also with that event in itself. That would be my November report.
Any questions or comments for the chief?
All right.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you again, may I be excused, sir?
She may.
Great, thank you.
Hey, congratulations again.
Thank you again, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the Mayor's report. Mayor Hushour?
Thank you, uh, Doc and Nancy for feeding us up here, we appreciate it. Little bit on the, um, PFAS update on November twenty-eighth, and, uh, uh, Council President will expand on this, uh, the, uh, Council President's staff and, and, uh, I went down and met with some M D E officials concerning, uh, PFAS issues in, in and around Mount Airy. I'll let the Council President expand on that. Uh, the fiscal year twenty twenty-three annual audit of the town has been completed by the contracted accounting firm of Brown Schultz Sheridan and Fritz. This was placed in the council members' mailboxes today, December fourth, and will be a topic of the Mayor's report in January of twenty twenty-four, after we have some time to, uh, read it and absorb it. Uh, the Mount Airy Senior Task Force Support Group, MASTS, will meet on December thirteenth at two P M. with the Mayor and the Council President Washabaugh. They would like to become a permanent commission focused on creating an age-friendly environment that allows for better quality of life for all and enhancing the ability to age in place in Mount Airy. So we'll be talking with the, uh, Council President about that, any other council members who might be interested, and the Town Attorney to figure out how we can, uh, get something in the code that would create a, a new commission in that regard. Um, Flatiron Update, the town staff and some members of the task force met with Brennan and Company's architects to view very early drafts of the architectural assessment of the building. This assessment should be complete by mid-January twenty twenty-four. This will serve as a basis for the council decision on how best to purpose that building. Uh, Rails to Trails Update, on the Eastern Trail, preparation work has begun on the remaining gravel section of the trail. Some shoring up must be completed, and then the asphalt will be placed in the remainder of that Eastern Trail, uh, once the weather permits for it, and all the preparation has been done. Uh, based on the water levels in the town's wells, even though it's been raining out there, uh, the water levels are still lower than normal in some instances, and the state's drought warning still stands, so as Mayor, I am extending the currently imposed voluntary water extric- restrictions through January of twenty twenty-four. So please conserve your water within your households and businesses with the utmost diligence. Turkey Trot, the Mamza-sponsored turkey trot occurred on Thanksgiving Day morning. At Shaladon Golf Course, I want to congratulate Mamza and the volunteers who organized that. That event raised seventy-two hundred dollars for the Mount Airy Net. So congratulations on that. Veterans Day ceremonies occurred on November eleventh and twelfth. Of note, P F C Ronald Kenny was recognized as the first Carroll County resident who was killed in the Vietnam War. His sister and nieces and nephews were at the ceremony, and it was a real honor to be able to prevent them, present them with a, uh, governor's citation for that and kind of bring back the memory of Ronald and, and what he did around town. I met some people who knew him, sounds like a very fascinating guy. Uh, sounds like he was a bit of a card in high school too, so. Uh, it was nice to, to, um, talk about him some. Uh, tomorrow evening, December fifth, the Historical Society will meet at seven P M. in the lower level of the Fire Company Station. The topic of discussion will be Mount Airy during the Civil War. There is a new historical book available for sale at the museum authored by Larry Valet, who is sitting out there. Who'd have thunk it? So Larry Valet wrote a book called The Early History of Mount Airy. It's on sale at the museum, it's a beautiful book, it's got fold-out maps, and it's an ideal Christmas gift. And there's only like a hundred and twenty of them, right? Or even a hundred? Yeah, so, uh, get them, get them quick. Uh, Christmas events continue through December. A wonderful tree lighting ceremony and parade occurred on December second. On December seventh at five thirty P M., the lighting at the menorah will occur. Uh, First Lady already mentioned, she's reading in the caboose on December tenth, eleven to eleven-thirty. The Jingle and Mingle Event with late-night shopping, carriage rides, carers, and the fire pit will occur on Main Street on December fifteenth, and Santa will be in the caboose from five to eight P M. Take your own pictures when you come. It's not too late to buy a town Christmas ornament on sale at Town Hall or the museum, and those are twenty bucks apiece, and since Ralph is out there, go Navy, beat Army!
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, next up, we will have, uh, Council Secretary, Council Secretary Galetti with the Recreation and Parks Board, Beautification Commission, and the Flatiron Task Force.
I'll start with Flatiron since it was covered by the Mayor and the First Lady, thank you. The, I do want to point out, the commission is continuing to meet again, so if you're interested, reach out. I think there's gonna be a meeting in January, not meeting over the holidays. Same with beautification, there was no meeting in November, there's not gonna be one in December, it'll be again in January. So I've got a short report from Parks and Rec, who will not be meeting in December, again, will follow-up meeting in January. So Windy Ridge Trail, they got a fifteen hundred dollar, fifteen hundred dollar donation from the Williamson's. Department of Environment visited with town staff and the Ellis's. M D E seems satisfied with the progress being made and approvals to begin. The bike optimized parts about to begin on Windy Ridge, so that's kind of exciting. And the Skate Park, December fourth, there's a fundraiser at San Brifede Fiesta. Uh, Chick-fil-A in the Spring grants are being re-explored, and new sign rules, so they are gearing up again with the skate park to start doing fundraising for that. So I'm glad they're staying engaged because they want to get the next couple phases up, but they've got to do some fundraising first. And the commission approved signs for the West End Trail, Rail Trail, there's an Eagle Project for bike racks arriving within maybe a month. Bathrooms at Watkins Park are closed for the winter, and there's no December meeting, next one is January eighteenth at seven o'clock, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council Secretary Galetti. Uh, next up, we will have Council Member Evans with the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Council President. On November twenty-seventh, the Planning Commission met, which was last Monday. The Carroll County Planner announced to us that the Transportation Master Plan was approved for Carroll County. The Frederick County Planner announced, um, Frederick County is reassessing the M X D zoning and has paused the zone until more information is available. The ne- the zone is apparently not giving them what they expected, and we will hear more from Justin Berger as it becomes available, and I will keep you guys updated with that. Approvals, simple site plan was approved for a new building, um, to the Comcast Building on South Main Street behind the Bear Creek Dental Building. They're basically upgrading their fiber optics, and they needed a new building, so they're adding one too and removing the old building. Um, so we did a site, simple site plan instead of a whole process. As far as the master plan goes, um, Chapter One, first draft is complete and put into our virtual parking lot. Chapter Three is currently still in review with the Water and Sewer. Chapter Four, we've reviewed, um, land use and zoning, we did initial, an initial, an initial review and are waiting some edits from town staff, tent, town staff to give us a second review at the next work session. Chapter Five, we also did an initial review, um, municipal growth element. We will be asking for assistance from the other commissions on the data for that. The next workshop was moved from November, December seventh to December fourteenth, and that's at seven thirty in Town Hall. Um, as far as the Planning Commission work, the P C's certification of the Green Tree Projects A P F O is underway with the town staff. The current status of those seven assessments, assessment areas is as follows. Uh, we are adequate, adequate for water and sewer, according to the town engineer. We are adequate, adequate for schools except for Mount Airy Middle, which is approaching inadequate beginning in the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven school year per Carol, per Carroll County Schools, approaching inadequate for police services according to Chief Ginevra. And the remaining areas, roads and traffic devices, fire, E-mass, and parks and open space are still pending their final assessments. Um, some dates to look forward to, December fourteenth is the next master plan workshop. January eleventh will be the next one after that. January sixteenth will be the Beck Property Joint Workshop at the American Legion. January twenty-ninth is our next Planning Commission meeting. We do not have a meeting scheduled in December due to the holidays. And April twenty-ninth is the estimated first draft of the master plan to be completed. And we also had a very important election, Mr. Butt stepped down as Chair. And with a unanimous decision by the commission, we voted, um, Chairman Ralph Gant as the president, and Vice Chair is Martina Hadley, Hatley with a unanimous vote as well. That concludes my report from November. Thank you.
Congratulations, Chairman Gant.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Uh, next up, we will have the Streets and Roads Commission and E D C with Council Member Demoter.
All right, thank you. Um, there was no meeting of the E D C in November. Um, I do want to remind you all to enjoy the events that the town of Mount Airy has to offer during the holiday season. The mayor ticked through those events, so I won't reiterate them here. I do want to mention that as part of the, um, the Jingle and Mingle Event on December eight, on December fifteenth from five to eight P M., the shops will be open late. And also, the Country Store and Drugstore Museum, um, will be open for tours during this special event. And the cost for that tour is five dollars per person. So if you haven't been in that building, it's, it's really interesting, and you might want to, uh, take that opportunity if you participate. Our next meeting will be held on January twenty-fourth of next year. Streets and Roads, uh, met on November twenty-eighth, we discussed a range of speeding and pedestrian and other safety concerns raised by our citizens, and the plan and immediate actions that the town will take in response to these issues. And again, Mayor Hushour was present at our meeting, and it's always good to have the mayor there because if issues come up, we can get real-time feedback and decisions about how the, the town can, can address those, so appreciate the participation. Um, and a reminder, in support of the mayor, back on November second, I intended a meeting with the M dot senior leadership team um, in support of the mayor and with the Carroll County Commissioners and other county, Carroll County elected officials, um, to discuss highway safety needs and priorities impacting the region. And as part of that meeting, I asked the M dot senior leadership team for help, specifically, um, I asked them for some consultation to get their perspective on roadway infrastructure and safety improvements that would likely be needed to Route twenty-seven and our local streets and roads associated with the proposed Mount Airy Crossing development. So just a reminder, this is a ninety-one acre mixed-use development comprised of four hundred and ninety-two housing units in its current plan, with Route twenty-seven traversing both sides of that development. And so with any new proposed development, I think it is important that we ensure that the safety of our citizens is paramount, and I think we want to ensure that pedestrian and vehicular safety for our citizens will be properly addressed. And so we will be meeting with the M dot representatives later this week to discuss this with a goal of getting an independent and unbiased informal perspective from them just for our frame of reference as we continue to think about, uh, this proposed development. We'll also be touching on other topics to include progress, uh, that they are offered to make on improvements to the pedestrian crosswalk by the caboose and the rail yard, and some other improvements, um, that they have agreed to support us on, on Main Street and other areas of the town. The next meeting of Streets and Roads will be held on January thirtieth of next year, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have Council Member Mundur with Recycling and Sanitation Commission and the Sustainability Commission.
Alrighty, the Sanitation Recycling Commission was, meeting was held on Wednesday, eleven fifteen at seven P M. here in Town Hall. Several concerns related to the, uh, normal business was discussed related to the, uh, downtown trash center, J and J trash pickups and things of that nature. Uh, some things, uh, need to mention is that December nineteen, ninth is the last yard waste pickup date for this season. There is a Christmas tree picked, pickup scheduled for January, please check the town's web, website for the exact date. The Recycling Coach App was discussed, and upon discussions, the commission has decided to discontinue the use of the Recycling Coach App because of a, uh, recent price increase to the, to the app. And most of the information that is provided via the app will be placed on the town's website and with, within the coming months here. Uh, so the next meeting for the Sanitation Recycling Commission will be January seventeenth at seven P M. here in Town Hall. There was no Sustainability Commission. The next meeting for that is scheduled for February fifteenth at seven P M. Here in Town Hall, and if you are thinking about serving on any commissions, please check out the Sanitation Recycling Commission and the Sustainability Commission. We are looking for members, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the Water and Sewer Commission report, uh, with myself. Our meeting for December has not happened yet, it will happen this Wednesday, twelve six, seven P M. at Town Hall. So in our January meeting, I will have two updates for you. Um, I would like to reiterate on the meetings that we had last week with the M D E. Myself, Mayor Hushour, our town engineer Barney Quinn, and our town administrator Heather Smith met with the M D E regarding the trailer park community on Twin Arch Road. The M D E has asked the town to help with their highly elevated PFAS levels. In order to start this process and to help the residents who reside in that community, the town will need to request an adjustment to the Carroll County's Water and Sewer Master Plan. Uh, the council can expect this request will be made in our January meeting. And that will conclude the Water and Sewer Report for this month. We will move on. We will move on to our Town Attorney Report with Mr. McCarron.
Other than the two items that we'll be addressing in the closed session, I do not have, uh, anything else to report.
All right, thank you, sir. Town Administrator Report, anything you'd like to add?
Nothing to add this month, thank you.
All right, and then we all have copies of our Code Enforcement Report, and our zoning administrator, nothing to add from your report either? All right, moving on. Under new business, uh, I would like to remind everybody that our January Town Council meeting will be moved to Monday, January eighth, uh, beginning at seven thirty due to the New Year holiday. We do not have any commission appointments and reappointments, correct, Mayor? All right. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions, we do have a resolution twenty twenty-three dash five regarding the Carroll County Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is for adoption. Do we have a motion?
I make the motion for adoption for Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash five regarding the Cal, the twenty twenty-two Carroll County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor for the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash five Carroll County Hazard Mitigation Plan, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have no unfinished business. Uh, at this time, the council will roll call into a closed meeting uh, under three dash three oh five subset B three for land acquisition. And three dash three oh five subset B subset one for a personal matter related to M A P D. We will need to roll call to these closed meetings. At the conclusion of those closed meetings, the December Town Council meeting will be adjourned. Council Member Evans?
Aye.
Council Member Demoter?
Aye.
Council Secretary, Council Secretary Galetti?
Aye.
Council Member?
It's okay.
Council Member Demoter? Sorry. Council Member Mundur?
Aye, sorry.
I am an aye as well at this. I am an aye as well. At this time, we will move into closed session.